All right. Good morning and welcome to the New York City Hybrid hearing on the Subcommittee on Landmarks, Public Sightings and Disposition. Please silence all electronic devices. Chair, we're ready to begin.
Wow, good morning. How are you? I am Councilmember Camila Hanks. I'm the Chair on the Subcommittee of Landmarks, Public Sightings and Dispositions. And I would like to welcome everyone on this fabulous Valentine's Day, nothing says love like landmarks, in this first meeting of the Subcommittee of this new session. Before we begin today's agenda, I'll remind everyone that this meeting is being held in a hybrid format. For members of the public who wish to testify remotely, we ask that you first register online and you may do so by visiting www.council.nyc.gov/landuse to sign up. If you have already registered but not yet signed into Zoom, please do so now and remain signed in until you have testified. For anyone here today that's testified in person wishing to testify, if you have not already done so, please see one of the sergeants to fill out a speaker's card and we will call your name at the appropriate time. For anyone wishing to submit a written testimony on the items being heard today, we ask that you please send it via email to landusetestimony@council.nyc.gov. And please indicate the land use number and/or project name under the application numbers, sorry, in the subject line of your email. So on today's agenda, we will have four public hearings for housing proposal in Councilmember Salam's district in Manhattan, as well as three LPC designations in districts represented by Councilmembers Salamanca, Caban and Powers. With that, we will hear three pre-considered individual landmark designations related to the Joseph Rodman Drake Park and Enslaved People's Burial Ground in Chair Salamanca's district in the Bronx. The Barkin Levin and Company Office Pavilion in Councilmember Caban's district in Queens and the, I don't even know how to say this, the Modulater Building in Councilmember Powers' district in Manhattan. I now open these public hearings and invite representatives to the Landmarks Preservation Commission to make these three presentations, which we will hear in succession in a combined joint hearing for all three sites. Let's move to my next page. Pardon me. Appearing today at LPC are Director of Research Kate Lemus-McHale and Stephen Thompson, Director of Community and Intergovernmental Affairs. I remind anyone wishing to testify remotely, if you have not already done so, you must register online and you may do so now by visiting the Council's website.
Panelists, would you please raise your right hand and state your name for the record?
Kate Lemus-McHale.
Stephen Thompson.
Do you affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth in your testimony before the Subcommittee and an answer to all the Councilmember questions?
I do.
I do.
Thank you, applicant panelists. Please begin and please let us know when you're ready to share your presentation and our staff will display it on the screen.
Thank you, and I'm ready whenever you are for the presentation. Thank you. Good morning Chair Hanks and welcome and Subcommittee members. I'm Kate Lemus-McHale, Director of Research at LPC. I'm joined by Stephen Thompson, our Director of Community and Intergovernmental Affairs. And the first designation, we could go to the next slide, please, is the designation of Joseph Rodman Drake Park and Enslaved People's Burial Ground, which is a park in Hunts Point owned and maintained by the New York City Parks Department. Its designation as a landmark recognizes the history of enslaved African and indigenous people in the Bronx and New York City and memorializes the enslaved people buried here. At LPC's public hearing on November 14th, six people spoke in favor of designation, including representatives of the Bronx Borough President's Office, the New York City Department of Parks and Recreation, Hunts Point Slave Bearing Ground Project, Historic Districts Council, New York Landmarks Conservancy and Loving the Bronx. The Commission also received 71 written submissions in favor of designation, including 38 written by students at nearby PS48 who have been actively involved in researching the history here, and there was no opposition to designation. Next slide, please. Thank you. Drake Park is shown here bounded by Oak Point, Longfellow and Hunts Point avenues and Drake Park South. It was identified for designation following a comprehensive survey of the Bronx, as well as part of our ongoing citywide survey to identify sites of significant African-American history. The Hunt Willett Leggett Cemetery near the park center contains burials associated with these three families who established farms on Hunts Point starting in the late 1600s. Just to its south is the burial ground for the African and likely also the indigenous people they enslaved. The designation protects grave markers and other above-ground historic resources, as well as burials and below-ground archaeological resources on the site. Next, please. Prior to European contact, Hunts Point was the home of the Muncie-speaking Siouanoy people. Its geography was drastically different then, consisting of two small peninsulas, Long Neck and Planting Neck, surrounded by a small bay that has been filled in. By the late 1600s, Thomas Hunt Jr., for whom Hunts Point is named, and Gabriel Leggett acquired Hunts Point. During the 1700s, these two families were joined by members of the Willett family and by the 1720s, they established a family cemetery just to the north of Hunts Point Road. And it's likely that the enslaved people's burial ground on the south side of this road was also established at that time. Next, please. Slavery began in New York in 1625, when the Dutch West India Company brought 11 enslaved people of African descent to the city. In the 1700s, New York's enslaved African population was the largest in the North. Like New York City, Westchester County, which Hunts Point was then a part of, was a slavery stronghold. The Hunt, Willett and Leggett families were enslavers, and shown here are documents associated with them. The will of the Revolutionary War hero, Thomas Hunt, directs the sale of the black people he enslaved. A list of African males in the 1755 census of slaves in Westchester includes the first names of some he enslaved, Abram Titus, Toby, Lily and Gin. And a 1744 notice announces a reward offered for the return of an enslaved man of African and indigenous descent to Gabriel Leggett. These documents show starkly how enslaved people were treated as property, but often are the only records we have of who they were. They also reveal the likelihood that both African and indigenous people were buried in the Hunts Point Cemetery. Next, please. Surrounded by an iron fence, the Hunt Willett Leggett Cemetery is the dominant visual feature of Drake Park. It contains about 25 brownstone and marble headstones dating from around the 1720s. Also buried in this cemetery was poet Joseph Rodman Drake, and it is for him that the park was named when it opened in 1910. Next, please. About 25 feet south of the Hunt Willett Leggett Cemetery was the burial ground for the enslaved people who labored for these families. Today, a park pathway runs in the approximate location of the old Hunts Point Road, which historically separated the two cemeteries. No markers remain to memorialize the enslaved people buried here. The sighting of the enslaved people burial ground close to but separate from that of their enslavers was typical at the time, but the survival of this historical arrangement within the New York City park is very rare and remarkable. Next, please. This undated photograph documents the grave markings that once existed in the enslaved people's burial ground, and numerous written accounts described their survival into the early 20th century. What became of them is not known. Around 2013, a Department of Education official found this historic photograph in the collection of the Museum of City in New York and inspired him to research the site. And so Philip Panerides and Justin Zarca, a teacher at nearby PS54, founded the Hunts Point Slave Bearing Ground Project and engaged the school's elementary age students in their research. A state-funded grant led to an archaeological study that was completed and ground penetrating radar documented about four potential burials in the site. Next, please. The name of the park was changed to recognize the history of this enslaved people's burial ground, and in 2021, the parks department installed new signage for Joseph Rodman Drake Park and Enslaved African Burial Ground. Drake Park now memorializes enslaved people whose history in the area and final resting place within the park long went unrecognized. Today, the park is a site of historical importance and remembrance, as well as a vital green space in an industrial section of the Bronx. This designation as a landmark further recognizes and protects the significant history, and I urge the Council to vote to uphold it. Thank you. And we're going through, so we could go to the next, please, and next again. Thank you. This next designation is the Barkin Levin and Company Office Pavilion, a distinguished example of mid-20th century modern architecture designed by Ulrich Franzin. Of particular interest is the pavilion's unusual structural system, nine concrete pillars that support umbrella-like ceiling vaults that project beyond glass walls. It was identified in a citywide survey of modern architecture. At the Commission's public hearing on November 28th, four people spoke in support of designation, including representatives of the owner, DOCOMO U.S./New York Tri-State, the Historic Districts Council and the New York Landmarks Conservancy. And we also received support from Queens Modern. There was no opposition to designation. At the time of designation, this was in Councilmember One's district and we briefed her staff on this designation. Next, please. The Barkin Levin Office Pavilion is in Long Island City in Queens, and it is now in District 22, Tiffany Caban. It is the, it's at the northwest corner of a large tax lot that includes the former Barkin Levin factory building, a windowless structure to the south. The landmark site includes just the office pavilion and the lawns surrounding it. The property owner supported designation and informed the Commission of plans to develop the site to the south using air rights from the Barkin Levin Pavilion. And their plans for the pavilion site include preserving it and the open space around it. Next, please. The architect Ulrich Franzin designed the pavilion as part of a factory complex for Barkin Levin and Company, a successful New York City manufacturer of women's coats. A German emigre who became significant architect known especially for his work in the brutalist style, this was one of Franzin's earliest commissions. The new factory was conceived as the "first major plant in the garment industry to incorporate all stages of production" and more than 2,000 people attended the opening in 1958. Next, please. The graceful minimalist structure was the factory's architectural highlight. With a square footprint, the glazed walls and floating cantilevered roof expressed a stylish, modern sensibility that reflected the company's concern for fashion and the welfare of its employees. It was presented as an exemplary design of an office pavilion in a range of publications. Shown here. Next, please. In November 1958, the Queens Chamber of Commerce awarded the Barkin Levin Factory first prize in the industrial class and it was featured in the New York Times. It subsequently was leased to the Structural Display Company, and their ad shows it holding up an elephant, and the AIA Guide to New York City has consistently noted its importance. Next, please. The building's current owner sensitively refurbished the pavilion in 2009, and it retains much of its original design and form and architectural significance. This little-known architectural gem was designated on December 19th, and we hope the Council will uphold the designation. Thank you. And we could go to the next two slides, actually. Thank you. And our third designation is the Modulater Building, an important work by the innovative American architect Paul Rudolph. It was designed in 1988 to 89 and constructed in two distinct phases, with the lower floors mostly completed in 1993. So this is the city's youngest landmark. It has crossed its 30-year birthday, so. At the public hearing on November 28th, six people spoke in support of designation, including representatives of the owner, the Paul Rudolph Institute for Modern Architecture, DOCOMO U.S. and DOCOMO U.S. New York Tri-State, Historic Districts Council, New York Landmarks Conservancy and NYC LGBT Historic Sites Project. No one spoke in opposition, and in addition, the Commission received 30 written submissions in support of designation. Next, please. The Modulater Building is in Manhattan at 246 East 58th Street, just west of Second Avenue. Next, please. Paul Rudolph was a leading figure in American architecture during the latter half of the 20th century. At the Harvard Graduate School of Design, he developed a modern sculptural aesthetic using industrial materials like concrete and steel. He moved his thriving practice to Manhattan at the height of his career in the mid-1960s, when he also headed the Yale School of Architecture and designed many important buildings. Some shown here, including the, what's known as the Paul Rudolph Building at Yale and the, his penthouse and apartments at 23 Beekman Place, which is a landmark. Next, please. Rudolph purchased the property in February 1989, and he and Ernst Wagner co-founded the Modulater Lighting Company in 1976 and developed a plan to rebuild the structure as a sales showroom with apartments above. And as you can see here, it replaced an 1860s row house that had been substantially remodeled at that time in the 60s. In 1990, Rudolph and Wagner moved their offices into the unfinished building. The Department of Buildings issued a certificate of occupancy in 1993. Next, please. The building has a remarkably lively and intricate street facade with steel eye beans forming jigsaw-like overlaps. Rudolph died in 1997, and the building was expanded vertically by architect Mark Squio, who worked in Rudolph's office in the 90s and based, drew inspiration from Rudolph drawings in the collection of the Library of Congress. This phase added two floors and a roof deck. The Modulater Building contains a ground floor commercial space, as well as a duplex apartment and exhibition space. It's owned and occupied by the Paul Rudolph Institute for Modern Architecture. This was designated on December 19th, and we urge the Council to uphold the designation. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there one? We have one more?
That's it.
That's it?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
I would like to recognize my colleagues who have joined us, Councilmember Brannon and Councilmember Marte. I'd like to also recognize if my colleagues have any questions or remarks on this. Having none, thank you. This appulant panel is now excused. Counsel, are there any members of the public who wish to testify on these items?
If anyone in public who, in person who gave a speaker card is wishing to speak about these, please let me know. I'd also just like to take this time to state that if anybody would like a copy of today's testimony, they can send an email to landusetestimony@council.nyc.gov. Chair Hanks, there's nobody online or in public who would like to testify.
Okay. Committee would now like to recognize Councilmember Farias, who's joined us. Please, thank you for your patience. We're waiting for our next hearing. Thank you. With that, we're going to open a public hearing on the Timbale Terrace Proposal relating to the property in Councilmember Salam's district in Manhattan. The proposal consists of two land use items under ULP numbers C240046HAM and C240047PQM. We are joined today by the project team members, including Agatha Nikita of HPD, Jorge Change, project architect, and Michelle Ponce of MEGA. We will also have for additional questions needed, Arvid Shinwani and Alex Rawning of HPD, and Dan Kent of the Lantern Organization. I'll remind anyone wishing to testify remotely, if you have not done so already, you must register online and you may do so now by visiting the Council's website at council.nyc.gov/landuse. Counsel, would you please administer the affirmation?
Panelists, would you please raise your right hand and state your name for the record? Do you affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth in your testimony before the Subcommittee and an answer to all Councilmember questions? And I think you could put on the microphone.
Sorry. Yes, I do.
Thank you, applicant panelists. Please begin and please let us know when you are ready to share your presentation and our staff will display it on the screen.
I think we're ready. Okay. Good morning Chair Hanks and Councilmembers. My name is Agatha Niklitska and I'm a Manhattan Borough Planner at HPD with the Manhattan Planning Team. I'm excited to be here today presenting on the Timbale Terrace Project, an affordable housing project that will result in the construction of a new 19-story building containing approximately 341 affordable and permanent supportive housing units. The proposed development also includes ground floor community facility space, which will be home to the Afro-Latin Jazz Alliance, and also NYPD replacement parking, which will be located on the ground and second floors of the proposed development. I'm joined here by other representatives of HPD and the development team, who will introduce themselves either later in the presentation or during questions as needed. Next slide, please. The Timbale Terrace Project came to be as a direct result of feedback received during the East Harlem Neighborhood Plan, which was completed in 2016 and was developed to provide recommendations for addressing key neighborhood issues. And a key recommendation of the plan was to use public sites to advance 100% affordable housing projects with additional services for residents. In 2021, this development team was selected by HPD via a competitive RFP to redevelop the NYPD parking lot located along Park Avenue between East 118th Street and East 119th Street. And HPD is excited about this unique opportunity to develop an underutilized city-owned parking lot with much-needed affordable and supportive housing units. Next slide. As part of the ULP application, HPD seeks approval for the following land use actions: UDEP designation and project approval and disposition of the development site, and an acquisition of approximately 30,000 square feet on the ground and second floors to provide space for 75 NYPD replacement parking spaces. And at this time, I turn over the presentation to Michelle Ponce from the development team to speak in more detail about the proposed project. Thank you.
Thank you, Agatha. Good morning Chair Hanks and fellow Councilmembers. My name is Michelle Ponce and I'm here on behalf of MEGA, co-developer and general contractor for the project. MEGA is a full-service general contracting, construction management and real estate development firm with a focus on affordable housing and a long history of working with community-based and not-for-profit organizations. I'm joined by my colleagues from Lantern, co-developer. Lantern is a nonprofit developer and social services provider with over 25 years of experience and has been in the East Harlem community since the year 2000. And I'm also joined by my colleagues from the Afro-Latin Jazz Alliance, who you will hear from during the public testimony piece. The Timbale Terrace Project, oh, sorry, can we go to the next slide? Timbale Terrace will deliver on affordability, maximize community benefits and be the highest and best use of publicly-owned land. As Agatha mentioned, this site was specifically cited in the East Harlem Neighborhood Plan as a publicly-owned site that should be transformed into 100% affordable housing. And in 2023 and 2024, Community Board 11 Statement of District Needs reaffirmed the need for affordable and supportive housing in the community board district. Timbale Terrace will be 100% affordable housing with replacement parking for the NYPD's 25th precinct and approximately 21,000 square feet of community facility space that will be the new permanent home of the Afro-Latin Jazz Alliance. In total, there will be 341 units, including one Supra's unit, and 99 permanent supportive housing, and 30% of the units will be sized for families. This building will be highly amenitized with a 16th floor that will be exclusively dedicated to residential amenities and residents will have access to panoramic views of the city. Next slide, please. Timbale Terrace will be financed through HPD and HCC's Extremely Low and Low Income Affordability Program, also known as ELLA, to deliver an integrated residential community and target the deepest levels of affordability. Timbale Terrace will serve households earning as low as 30% of the area median income and up to 80% of the area median income. As you can see in the table here, we have 88 units at 30% of AMI, 70 units at 50% of AMI, and 83 units at 80% of AMI, and the 99 permanent supportive housing units. 75% of all units are targeting households earning up to 50% of AMI and below. The 99 permanent supportive housing units will receive onsite supportive services from Lantern. All right, next slide. All right, and now on this table, we can see an updated proposed affordability distribution that came about of the ULP and UDEP process. So throughout the UDEP process and throughout our extensive community engagement, we heard from the community the need for more family-sized units. Our team took this feedback to heart and we sat down and evaluated the feasibility of adding additional family-sized units. And we're happy to share that we have been able to do that. We've significantly increased the number of family-sized units, bringing the total percentage to 35% in response to the feedback that we received from the community. Next slide, please. All right. Now, to quickly go over the qualifying incomes and monthly rents that would be at Timbale Terrace. So the 99 permanent supportive housing units will, the individuals will pay no more than 30% of their income. And as you can see here on the table, units at 30% of AMI will have qualifying incomes ranging from $29,700 up to $49,140 per year, with qualifying rents ranging between $617 and $830 per month. These ranges vary on household size and unit size. 50% of AMI qualifying incomes will range between $49,450 up to $81,900, and corresponding rents will vary from $1,146 to $1,564 per month. And for the 80% AMI tier, corresponding incomes will range between $79,120 up to $131,040, with corresponding rents ranging between $1,941 up to $2,665 per month. Again, these rents will vary depending on household size and the unit size. Next slide, please. All right. The Alja Music and Art Center, as I mentioned earlier, Timbale Terrace will be the permanent home for the Afro-Latin Jazz Alliance and will house Alja's staff, performance and educational programs. The Alja space will activate the Park Avenue corridor with an active storefront that will include performance and rehearsal spaces, music educational facilities, meeting rooms, event spaces, coworking spaces, a cafe and shop. And you'll hear more about the programming from my colleague Zach during the public testimony piece. And now I'll pass it on to my colleague George Chang from UAI.
Good morning, everyone. I'm Jorge Chang from Urban Architectural Initiatives, and I'm the architect for Timbale Terrace. With sustainable design and resiliency in mind...
Next slide.
Sorry, next slide. With sustainable design and resiliency in mind, Timbale Terrace is designed to be highly energy-efficient and reduce carbon emissions as an all-electric building. Aside from meeting and exceeding enterprise communities criteria, passive house design and standards will be implemented throughout, such as high-performance thermally broken, insulated and sound-attenuating windows, super insulated walls and roof, an airtight building envelope, and solar PV panels to be located on the rooftop. There are several common outdoor amenities spaces for resident and building staff use and enrichment. These include residents will have access to a third-floor landscaped rear court, an outdoor jogging path, gathering areas and seating for active and passive recreation and socializing. A rooftop community garden on the eighth floor is also proposed for Lantern's horticulture, health and nutrition programming. And the 16th floor will have a dedicated supportive services program office suite, large community and meeting rooms, fitness rooms to promote active living and access to a roof terrace with panoramic views of Harlem. And I'll pass the presentation back to Michelle.
Thank you, George. Can we go to the next slide, please? All right. Lastly, economic development. Our team will partner and coordinate with community-based organizations, building skills and hire NYC to post the job opportunities, construction job opportunities that be available for Timbale Terrace. Our team will also provide priority for local residents and will collaborate with the community board and other local organizations to host OSHA trainings free of charge to local residents. An OSHA certificate is great because it will definitely open up job opportunities in the construction field for those individuals that receive it. And as you can see here... And as you can see here in the table, MEGA has an excellent track record of meeting local hiring and MWBE goals. For hiring, you can see here that we've often exceeded our hiring goals by 10%, 20%, 30%. And we will also be committing to maximizing our MWBE contracting goals as well. And with that, that concludes our presentation for Timbale Terrace. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. I'd also like to recognize Councilmember Nurse has joined us. Thank you. So I have some questions. Can you elaborate on the target populations for the supportive housing units and how the two will interact?
Yes, and for that, we'll pass it to our colleague Dan Kent from Lantern.
Good morning, everyone. Dan Kent, CEO of Lantern Organization. The proposal includes... Ah, thank you. The proposal includes 97 studio apartments, which would be reserved for individuals from the 1515 program, specifically the single adult population.
Thank you. Has Lantern successfully combined adult and youth populations in the same building and in other locations?
Absolutely. In fact, right next door at Shafer Hall, we serve both young adults and single adults. And we serve a wide range of populations. We have over 1,400 units of affordable and supportive housing throughout New York City, most of which serve a mix of populations.
Thank you so much. And lastly, could you explain how supportive and affordable units will be distributed through the building?
Yes, as per regulations, they're distributed randomly.
Okay, sorry. One more question. Thank you, sorry. What was the rationale for increasing the number of larger units in the building at a higher number of smaller units? Were there any trade-offs in making those decisions?
The rationale was community input. That's why we increased the number, or the percentage of family units. The primary trade-off is it makes the project a little more expensive.
Thank you so much. Now, I'd like to recognize any of my colleagues, if everyone had any questions or remarks. Councilmember Barrios.
Thank you so much, Chair. Just a quick question on the economic development piece. You've... We've listed here CBOs, building trades, and higher NYC. Do we know the percentage of people in the local area that we can pull to hire from? Do we know if there's like 10%, 15%, 20% are in construction skills, or in the union, or have some sort of trade certification or credential that we'll be utilizing to hire on this project?
So we will definitely work with the community board and other local organizations to post these jobs. Our target is that 30% of the new hires be local residents from the community board.
Okay. So the target goal is 30%, but we haven't initially had any conversations yet to see what the percentage of people in the locality are within the union or have been credentialed.
Not yet, but we've started those conversations a bit as we've gone through this ULP and UDEP process.
Okay, great. And I obviously, as someone that's worked in job training prior, I always love to see when folks are going to add more people to OSHA training and having recruitment sessions. As many of us know, job training programs, apprenticeship programs are longer than potentially how long this is going to take to be built. And so, you know, I, one, like to say, please consider as early as you possibly can to start that process, to make sure people from the locality can actually benefit from being on this project. Secondarily, working with the unions is super critical in going beyond these bare minimum credentials and making sure people can work. The... I was just in a transportation and contracts hearing as I ran over here talking about MWBEs. Again, do we know the percentage of MWBE subcontractors that are in this local area that could potentially be on the project?
We haven't identified them yet, but that is an exercise that we can definitely start doing as early as possible. MEGA frequently exceeds the goals that HPD and HCCs require, so we feel comfortable about maximizing the MWBE contracting opportunities here as well.
Okay, great. Thank you, folks, for answering my questions. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Madam Majority Leader. Anyone else? Councilmember Nurse?
Just a quick question. It's great to see the passive house elements being used here, and I love that it's being used more, but on the post-construction side, when people are moving in, in my community, I've noticed a lot of problems with mold, water leaks, people not understanding that these types of windows are hard to get. And so, just wondering if you're planning on doing any education about what this type of unit means for tenants, lack of screens, just what, you know, that they have to change the filters often, because I think a lot of people are very unfamiliar with this and don't realize just how much maintenance they need to do annually to make sure that the unit itself is healthy. And so, I guess, not really a question, but just a comment that I've... We've been seeing this in the post-construction period, and it would be good to just let people know and build in a plan for regularly changing the filters and making sure those things don't become an issue.
No, Councilmember, that's a great point, and our intent, too, is to provide that training. It's good for the tenants to know, but it's also great for the longevity of each unit. So duly noted, and we'll definitely be incorporating that.
Thank you so much. Thank you. The applicant panel is now excused. Counsel, are there any members of the public who wish to testify on this item?
Yes. We're going to call up the first three that have cards for it. Julius Tajadine, Zachary O'Farrell, and Cynthia Stewart. So if you are a member of the public signed up to testify on the proposal, please stand by when you hear your name being called and prepared to speak when the chair says that you may begin. As a reminder, in the event that council members have questions, witnesses are asked to remain online or to stay seated here at the microphone after their testimony until excused by the chair.
You may begin.
Thanks. Thank you, committee. My name is Zach O'Farrell. I am the community liaison with Belongo, formerly known as the Afro-Latin Jazz Alliance. I just first want to say that we are very proud to have called various parts of Harlem home for a long time, from when we had our offices at Harlem School of the Arts, to when we had our offices at the Minisink Townhouse with the Mission Society, then to the one-bedroom apartment that we turned into an office on, at 20 West 125th Street between Malcolm X and Fifth. And now we're at art space El Barrio on 99th between Second and Third. So we feel a deep connection to the area and are very proud to be a part of this project and that our forever home can be on Park Avenue between 118th and 119th. I just want to talk about the activation of Park Avenue and all the activities, all that we'll be able to offer to the community up there, whether it's our performance spaces, where we'll be presenting artists and performances that are diverse and culturally relevant to people in the community, that reflect the incredible diversity of the community, to the smaller venue that we'll have as part of our café, which we can treat as like a jazz club, which can be an opportunity for local artists to meet each other and perform together and have opportunities to make music and build community almost every night of the week. We have educational spaces where we are playing... Oh, my God, I'm already almost done. We want to... We want to be the community music school in East Harlem. We want to be where young people can come and take classes that are affordable. We want to... We want to use our coworking spaces as places where people can get English classes, or, as is becoming increasingly important, Spanish classes, personal finance classes. Oh, that's my time.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Sorry, we did not announce that the public will be given two minutes to speak. I apologize.
You're clearly...
You may begin.
Okay. Hi, I'm Cynthia Stewart. I'm the chief operating officer of the Supportive Housing Network of New York, and we are a membership organization representing 200 nonprofits statewide that collectively run 60,000 units of supportive housing. I've been doing this for a good, long time. I've been in the supportive housing field for 30 years. I can wholeheartedly attest to the safety and effectiveness of supportive housing, which has been built in New York City for the past 40 years. It has a sterling reputation for being both the premier intervention for helping our most vulnerable neighbors live stably in the community, as well as being an excellent and responsive neighbor. There are dozens of studies that prove the effectiveness of supportive housing in ending homelessness, and there was even an NYU study that proved that supportive housing actually increases property values. So, you know, that's good. And as you know, property values is a reflection of safety and neighborhood desirability. But even though I've worked in supportive housing for a really long time, and I'm a diehard supporter of it, I'm here to point out to the committee that it's a small part of this fantastic project, which I have to say is probably the most fantastic I've ever seen in 30 years in New York City, because it has 250 affordable units in East Harlem that is gentrifying, because it has the Afro-Latin Jazz Center, because it is... And it supports East Harlem's sense of pride and, you know, ability and culture. So it's... I can't believe how fantastic it is. And while I was listening to Jorge speak about all the other things, I was like, wow, this is even better than I thought. So of all the three components of this gorgeous project, I very much hope the subcommittee supports the building of it. Thanks. I made it.
Thank you.
Sorry, did Julius Tajadine want to speak?
Yeah. Oops. Yes, Julius Tajadine. This... I live... I'm an East Harlem resident, and I like the project, but these are the problems with it. According to the latest NYU-Freeman report, 60% of East Harlem households earn at or below $30,000 a year. 33% are at the federal, or below, at the federal poverty level, which is approximately $14,000 a year. The developer in this project touts that the residential units are 100% affordable, yet they don't tap into this 60% group, let alone the 33% group. I find it very appalling that this city can house migrants in luxury housing, no less, but far too often don't allow housing for our less fortunate residents, in this case, who have probably been here their entire lives or for a very long time. The way the ecosystem in housing should work is that when new housing is built, some of the people living in such communities should go into that housing. Then the landlords of these dilapidated buildings can renovate them and let some new transplants occupy them. Many of the East Harlem residents in that 60% group, as well as the 33% group, live in overcrowded and deplorable apartments. As far as the AMI goes, the use of it is a convenience for developers. Even if a developer was shooting for a federal benefit, which would require the use of the AMI, that has nothing to do with us. By the time of this closing, the AMI could be $10,000 to $15,000 more than the $127,000 that it's currently. So it's a system where the goalpost is always moving. But if we use the method of income-targeted housing, it is what it is. We want housing that protects a certain income class, and that will not change. What the developer presents today could change by the time of the closing. Lastly, this developer said nothing about guaranteeing construction jobs for our US citizen residents in the Harlem area. I travel all over the country, and in the South, Black people work in every job sector. Yet here, there are too many job industries, such as construction, where you don't see Black construction workers. Why is that? I can tell you, it's not the Black citizens doing, it's the government's doing. You, the committee, and hopefully the city council, have an opportunity to fix this. So that's what's wrong with this project. Everything else about it is good.
Thank you so much.
Any questions? Mr. Salam, any questions?
Are there any questions? Well, firstly, I'd like to recognize Councilmember Youssef Salam has joined us. And anyone have questions? Councilmember Marte?
Hello. Just a quick comment. Many of the migrants aren't staying in luxury housing. And, you know, I understand what you're trying to fight for. Many of us try to fight for the same thing in our communities, but you can't pit one community against another.
No, but we... I can... We can protect our residents, our US citizen residents, you know. I believe I said... Yeah, well, there... You know, I didn't put a number like many or a little, but that's what they're doing. And yet, in our communities, you know, in the Black and Brown, you know, people that have been here for a while, they're not looking out for them. They're just totally... They're missing that number. You know, the 60% number, earning 30% and below, and then 33%, you know, earning below the poverty level. And yet, you say, we're offering, you know, everything's affordable, but yet you stop short of that number, and you can't do that. That has to stop.
Actually, I do have a question, and it might be to this particular project. As I was understanding AMI, and correct me if I'm wrong, it's... Is the... Is the correct description of AMI up to, meaning like 0 to 30% for that particular category, 0 to 50%?
No, let me explain it to you.
And 0 to 80%? Because when I hear "up to"...
No, it's the area median income, and the developers, they use the federal area... They don't have to do it. They do it out of convenience, because the... If you're going, for example, the low-income housing tax credit, a developer, right? So HUD would require them to offer 80%... You know, like so many units, at 80% of the AMI or lower. It still gives the developer an opportunity to offer it at even 10%.
Sir, I'm... Thank you so much. I think that the council member would like to ask the question of the panel that gave the presentation, and they would... We can do that at a later date, but we want to thank this being no more questions on this panel. The witnesses are now excused. Thank you so much.
We're going to be calling up the next panel. Diane Lord-Michael. David Gilchrist. Alfredo Colon. We have about eight online.
So 30% of this is the incomes between these two. It doesn't go from zero to six...
It doesn't go. Because that's what they were telling me.
No. We're just going up to, meaning that...
We'll now hear from the next panel.
Hello. Hi, my name is David Gilchrist. I'm a resident of Community Board 11 since 1999, and the former director of development at Hope Community from 1991 to 1995, where I helped build senior and low-income family housing. Subsequently, I have worked for the Corporation for Supportive Housing, and for the last 20 years, served as the executive director of Project Fine, an elder services organization based in Manhattan, Community Boards Four, Five, and Seven. I'd like to express my strong support for the Timbale Terrace for the following reasons. First, the extreme shortage of affordable housing is one of the most critical challenges facing East Harlem, as it dramatically affects the demographic composition of this historically working-class neighborhood, and thus its very future. Without a doubt, it's become increasingly difficult for working-class community members to find superior accommodations to them in this neighborhood. The Lantern Group's proposal will produce 340 units of permanent affordable housing to households earning between 30% and 80% of area median income. The project will contain one, two, and even three-bedroom units, making it relevant to households of a variety of sizes. And East Harlem... And East Harlemites will receive key advantages over other applicants. The Lantern Group has negotiated with HPD, a community preference, for 50% of the affordable units. Secondly, Timbali Terrace will transform longstanding vacant lots into a vital hub of urban life that will reinforce other development efforts along Park Avenue. The site has been vacant for years, making that stretch of Park Avenue more of a no-man's land to be avoided than a community asset. The Lantern Group has a sound plan to reverse this dynamic. For starters, once fully occupied, Timbali Terrace will house up to 600 people. Multiplying this effect will be the inclusion of a cultural powerhouse, the Afro-Latin Jazz Alliance, which brings its commitment to performance and public education. It's a huge win for East Harlem. This program will seat a new generation of musical-- That was fast.
Thank you so much.
Hi, everybody. My name is Alfredo Colon. I'm a saxophonist, composer, music curator, New Yorker. I grew up in public housing in Harlem and was a student of the Afro-Latin Jazz Alliance's Fat Afro-Latin Jazz Cats program, where they would teach us how to perform every Sunday at Fat Cat Jazz Club. This program has changed my life for the better. There, I received free education, free music education, at a time when my family could not afford to put me in lessons. I've met lifelong friends of mine, Zach being one of them. And I, it's changed my life in so many ways. I'm now a professional musician with a robust touring schedule. I've won multiple awards. I have many endorsements under my belt. And none of it would have been possible without the Afro-Latin Jazz Alliance. Being a Harlem resident myself, this, or someone who grew up in Harlem, this is something that hits very close to home. And someone who's worked with them and been a part of the community, I can attest to all that they have done for the community, and I can see how much they brighten everything in the community. So I know I'm like, I kind of breeze through that, but that's all I have to say. If they could do that for me, I can only imagine what they can do for an entire community with the building. So thank you all.
Thank you for that powerful testimony. Congratulations. Thank you very much. This panel is now excused.
Calling up the next group, confirming that Diane Lord-Michael does not want to testify at this time. Shams DeBaron, and I'm not sure if Melissa Auton wants to speak at this time. So Shams DeBaron.
How's everybody?
Great. You may begin.
Yeah, so as a product of Harlem, my family originated in East--
All right, what's your name?
Shams DeBaron. Okay. As a product of Harlem, as someone whose family originates in East Harlem, I'm obviously concerned at what goes on in Harlem. And so one of my objectives in what I do now as the Housing Hero is to ensure that communities like Harlem that are having developments, are having developments that not only benefit the developers, the nonprofit partners, the residents, but also the overall community. And I support Timbali Terrace because this is one of those projects that is unique to the community, that offers not just the supportive services that address communities like, you know, those that experiencing homelessness, et cetera, but also workforce housing. And we've seen so much through gentrification and other means of our people from Harlem have to leave Harlem and go out of state in different places. So we lose our local workforce, which are, many of them are city workers, many of them are law enforcement. I deal with these people all the time, who, they're processing the application for someone who's facing eviction, or someone who's exiting a shelter, but they themselves are facing homelessness. They themselves are saying, I don't got long on this job because I can't afford to live in my apartment in Harlem. Shams, can you help me? Because I can't, I can't access a voucher. So it's a lot of different reasons why I have to support projects like this. And the fact that half of its residents are going to be under the 30% of the AMI is important. The fact that it maintains its cultural integrity, specifically in East Harlem through an Afro-Latino cultural center, is important to me. The fact that they have heard the community, and there are certain things that they had to change because the community wanted it, and they did that, is why I have to support it. And last thing, we can't continue to build shelters as the alternative for people that can't afford to live in the communities. We have to center housing over shelters. Harlem is saturated, oversaturated with shelters. They keep building them because it's easier to build shelters. You build them within a year, two years. With housing, it's taken three, four, five years, and especially affordable housing. The fact that we have to struggle to get affordable housing in Harlem is crazy to me. So we need to change this, and I hope all of you can support that and do a development that could actually show the rest of the city and the rest of the world how we need to properly address affordable housing in communities like Harlem. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Well done, everyone.
Is there, is there anyone else in person who would like to speak now? And just as a reminder, anyone can send written testimony to our email address, We're going to be moving now to our virtual panel. The first three that will be called up are Aurora Flores, Brian Dickerson, and George James.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yeah.
Can you hear me?
Now we can. Thank you. You may begin.
Hi, how are you? My name is Aurora Flores, and I'm an author, artist, and Latin music educator, producer of 100 Years of Latin Music in New York over YouTube. And what I want to say is, affordable housing can save lives, while music can heal the soul, the body, and the mind, bringing communities together. East Harlem, El Barrio, as we know it, has always been a community of Puerto Ricans, African-Americans, immigrants, and many of that diverse ethnic groups living here today. And it has always been a poor, working-class community that brought its music, art, and poetry to these streets. In fact, the history of Latin music in New York begins, and can be traced to the opening of the first Latin music record shop on Mazzanes Hernandez in 1927 on 114th Street and Park Avenue. For the past 100 years, these streets have been steeped in our syncopated rhythms, drums, chants, and songs from classical to popular music. The Timbali Building is a direct partnership with this community. It is a united effort between affordable housing and music education and presentation that will directly impact not only youth, but many families also here and coming to Spanish Harlem who need and deserve affordable housing. Reaganomics took music out of our public schools back in the 1980s, leaving this huge gap in the instruction of children and the building of character to a few patchy and inconsistent organizations scattered throughout the city. Here, we have an opportunity to bring a cohesive and consistent stream of music, history, and education back to this diverse community alongside affordable housing for youth and families. As a lifelong resident of El Barrio, an author, an artist, and activist, I am for an appeal, especially on this significant day of love, to approve the building and creation of this musical center within this complex of affordable housing, to raise our pride and cohesion as a community, and honor our music and artistic legacy. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Brian Dickerson?
I would also like to recognize Councilmember Felice is joining us online virtually.
Hello, I'm Brian Dickerson. I'm a clinical social worker, a son of Harlem. I've been working with Lantern for over 15 years. And I feel like I'm in a really blessed situation because I'm one of the guys that work directly with the folks that move in. And I've been able to experience them coming in with the trauma of being unhoused and seeing them achieve and overcome obstacles and every, and incrementally, arriving at greater and greater success. I've had people who have come in and been able to finish college, to find partners, to have children, to become a major force in our community, and to give back. I have a young person that became a social worker and came back one day and I, and said, Brian, do you remember me? And I was like, yeah, yeah. And she told me her name, and I was like, I lived here. I went to Hunter, and I'm a social worker, and you helped inspire that. And I say that with humility. And she was bringing someone else. So the importance, I know someone said, what, I want to tell you what's good about Lantern and about any vulnerable person who's unhoused needs a place to live to start their life, whether it's migrant populations, our solemn seekers, unhoused neighbors, whoever it is, singles, young adults. The impact that this beautiful space will have when a person walks in and is able to say, I'm going to live here, this is the beginning. It tells people their self-worth, that this space is beautiful, and someone cares. And there's this incredible team that I work with, social workers, case managers, that are there because they have great empathy, and they're authentically there because of it, to the mission of helping all people, specifically our community, part of the African diaspora and beyond. So this is a great project. I support it wholeheartedly. I support it whether I'm volunteering or whether I'm, it's not, it's not the money that brings you, obviously, social workers don't make a lot of money. So it's not about that.
Thank you so much.
It's about the mission. So I'm really happy to be able to support Timbali Terrace. Thank you.
Thank you.
That's all. I look forward to meeting you.
George James?
Thank you. My name is George James. I've been the Consulting Planner to Community Board 11 for the past 10 years. Today, I'm here on my own time to offer support for Timbali Terrace. Timbali Terrace and other projects that are in the pipeline are a testament to the effectiveness of community-based planning and the East Harlem Neighborhood Plan. Compared to other Manhattan community districts since 2014, East Harlem has produced the most new construction affordable housing, produced the most new construction affordable housing serving the lowest income bands, and preserved the most existing affordable housing units by far. East Harlem has not produced the most total new housing, but it has produced the most affordable housing. And affordability was the focus of the Neighborhood Plan. Projects like Timbali Terrace with 100% affordable housing are critical to the plans of implementation. Now, I came here today because, to my surprise, this project had substantial community opposition. I've been to nearly every Community Board 11 land use meeting over the past 10 years, and I've never seen anything like it. As someone who believes we must listen to neighbors when they speak, I remind everyone that the Neighborhood Plan called for development that prioritizes not only affordable housing, but also housing for the homeless and supportive housing. Opposition to Timbali concerned the supportive housing component. Neighborhood, neighbors see the crime and disorder in the streets, and they believe that supportive housing will bring more of that to the neighborhood. Let me be clear. The concerns that the neighbors have about crime and disorder are completely legitimate, and we should be doing more to find solutions to these problems. But Timbali, with the housing it springs, is not part of that problem. It's part of the solution. Timbali Terrace helps to realize Neighborhood Plan deserves your support. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Are there any council members with questions for this panel? Thank you. Next.
Okay, we will, we'll now call the next three panelists online, Doreen Burton, Lisa Jackson Foil, and Malin Mata.
Hi, good afternoon. My name is Doreen Burton. About 10 years ago, I was living with my father when he suddenly passed away. Because I was not on his leads, I became homeless. I went into the shelter system. But I felt like I was in jail because I knew many people that was having problems. I had to, also while I was in the shelter system, we would have to move to a new shelter every few months, which meant I had to find a new doctor or dentist each time. This was so frustrating to have to find new providers. My health was very poor. Then one day, I met a program director from Lanning, who told me that if I could possibly just hold on for a few more months, that they were opening a new building called Prospero Hall that I possibly could move into. So I held on until it opened. I was one of the first tenants to move into Prospero Hall, and my life has never been the same. Now I'm able to see a doctor on a regular basis without worrying that I will have to relocate, find a new doctor, and tell my story over again. This was so frustrating to have to find new providers. Supportive housing has done me a big favor. I appreciate all case managers and program directors for all that they do for me. My health is better because I don't have to stress anymore of worrying about belongings being taken and everything else, especially when I'm going to lay my head at night. I was under constant stress. Here at Prospero, I can always contact a case manager. Thank you.
I just want to say thank you for that and sharing your powerful testimony. I really appreciate it. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Lisa Jackson Foil?
Hey, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, good afternoon. My name is Lisa Jackson Foil, and I am one of the owners of FTE Builders. We are a state-certified MWBE subcontractor, and we specialize in interior rough and finished carpentry. And I am here to attest that mega-contracting does fulfill the need to hire MWBEs on a lot of their projects. One in particular was, the first, one of the first projects that we worked on was a Randolph Houses in Harlem. And we were in Phase 1 and Phase 2, where we, there was a total gut renovation on some tenement houses on that block, a well-known block, historical block. And what we did for the community, I believe, was to hire, local hire, as well as, I believe we were, signed up with Hire NYC. But we had young men from that neighborhood that really didn't have a lot of skills in the construction industry, and they came on board, and they started as laborers. And, you know, we were there for a few years, and they were able to increase your skills and move into different, different trades, starting off as labormen, and then moving along the ladder to, you know, to, number one, increase their pay, and so on by learning new skills. So I am sure that mega will continue their reputation of hiring MBEs, MWBEs especially, which we are one of. So I believe that this Timbali project is going to be a great project. I'm strictly an arts girl as well. My daughter is a local arts teacher, so I'm for the project and for hiring MBEs.
Thank you so much.
Malin Mata?
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Good afternoon. My name is Malin Mata, and I am New York Director at Regional Plan Association. Thank you to Chair Hanks and all the members of the Subcommittee for the opportunity to testify today in support of the Timbali Terrace project. The recently released 2023 Housing and Vacancy Survey shows that our city has a 1% vacancy rate for affordable units across the city, which is the lowest vacancy rate in half a century. Moreover, we've estimated that our city and state will require over 800,000 new units of housing in the next decade to meet current and future demand. While Timbali Terrace is a fraction of the need, it provides an incredible model of creating a sustainable mixed-use and mixed-income development that delivers on housing and community needs. East Harlem is in real need of new affordable housing. Real median gross rent has increased over 50% since 2006, and nearly half of all new development over the last decade was market rate. The Timbali Terrace project creates tremendous opportunities by providing a 100% affordable housing development that would be accessible for households and families earning 30% to 80% AMI. And it does this at a time when the community is seeing major investments, helping to ensure that some of the most vulnerable New Yorkers are able to securely take advantage of these new opportunities. More importantly, this project realizes goals from the East Harlem Neighborhood Plan to prioritize public sites for the creation of more affordable housing. Too many communities work through exhaustive planning processes only to see few benefits realized. Timbali Terrace puts the community's vision into action and demonstrates to New Yorkers that the time and effort invested in community planning can deliver results. By building this project on an NYPD parking lot, we can provide sustainable infill development, give housing and resources to vulnerable New Yorkers, and ensure they take advantage of the investment and opportunities that will, that will be created in the years to come. Model projects like this that serve vulnerable populations are really vital to moving our region forward. Too many communities have enacted exclusionary policies, which has led to a current housing deficit. We hope you'll approve this project and encourage more communities to do their part in supporting New Yorkers in need of affordable housing. Thank you for your time.
Thank you so much. Are there any questions from my, my council members that are still here? No? Okay, so this panel is now excused.
We have one more person signed up to speak in person to answer the AMI question, Alex Rodding from HPD.
Oh, sorry. No, I'm excited. I'm just nervous. My, my first time. That's fine. Yes. Red means go. Red means go. Okay, great. All right, thank you. I'm Alex Rodding. I'm the Director of New Construction Finance at HPD, and I wanted to respond to Councilmember Salam's AMI question. The area median income is the tool that HPD uses to set the maximizing, maximum income qualifying households in our units. So, in direct response to your question, a tenant in a 30% AMI unit will earn no more than 30% of AMI. The lowest qualifying income for that tenant is set so that an applicant pays no more than 35% of their income on rent. So, that exact amount is highlighted in the chart. It's $29,700, and could, I believe it's page 3, and, and could shift depending on the household size. That's for a tenant that's paying rent. Great HPD projects and affordable housing projects in general are also a great resource for tenants that have a federal, state, or city rental assistance voucher, in that a tenant with a rental assistance voucher, there are no minimum income qualifications. They could be earning $0 so long as they have a voucher that pays the qualifying rent of the building. Thank you.
Thank you. I have one quick question. So, if, if a project is locked in at a certain AMI, and I believe that that's an average of, that could be up to three different levels. So, in, in this project, it's 30, 60, and 80. Those 30, 50, and 80. By the time the project is, is built, which is always like a two-year gap, what happens to incomes and levels that have shifted?
Great. Thank, thank you for that question. So, the maximum qualifying income will shift to the year of when the, the project is marketing or leasing up. So, let's say we're, maybe I can go through a specific example. So, a project begins construction today, and it's ready for tenants to move in in two years. The maximum qualifying income for a 30% AMI unit will be 30% of 2026 AMI. The minimum qualifying income will remain the same because that is set so that no tenant pays more than 35% of their income on rent, and rents have not changed even though the income limits have increased with AMIs.
Right. So, I, I say that to say that there are many folks who want to support these projects, and they are looking at where they are right now, and then when the project is, is done, it's shifting. So, we just want to, like, keep an eye on that, or at least incorporate that in our presentations. But thank you.
I got a, I got a question that you may be able to help me with, too. Since I'm probably maybe the newest member, to not necessarily the council, but to the political space as well, my question is maybe just a question out of curiosity. Why use the AMI model in the first place? Meaning, like, is that the only model that can be used? Are we restricted to AMI? Or is there other opportunities? Because as we heard earlier, I was particularly concerned when I not just walked around the community as a person that was campaigning for office, but also as we reheard again the testimony from Julius Tadredine, 60% of the community is earning far below what that AMI is. And I'm just wondering, because that, that community, if that's, if that's the majority, but then we're saying, well, we want the, the median of the area, but the majority in this particular area specifically is earning far lower than that. I'm just wondering, is AMI the only model that can be used? And if it's not, then is there other things that might be able to be used in, in projects like these?
Yeah, that's, I appreciate that question, and I'd say that's probably the start of a longer conversation that I'm sure HPD would be, be happy to, to have with you and other members of the council. So, I'll give the, the short answer, and that is, AMIs are the established tool for the affordable housing industry across the nation, and they are set based on a broad area for New York City. So, they don't, they're not necessarily linked to the smaller districts in which you serve. And so, that's, you know, the discrepancy you, you pointed out is accurate, HPD and the city. While we're bound to use that tool to comply with our, the financing, other financing sources at our disposal, we're not necessarily, we don't necessarily need to, or we're still able to size rents and AMIs to, you know, serve the community as best as possible. And so, what I mean by that is, not every project proposes the same AMI distribution, and developers and HPD work to identify AMIs that will ensure the long-term financial viability of the building while also serving community members.
I could just add quickly to that. Thank you for your question, Councilmember Salam. I just wanted to add that the reason why we prioritized units at 30% of the area median income is because of the point you just made, because in East Harlem, 60% of AMI is not low-income housing. That's the typical definition for the federal government to get funding for a project like this. But thanks to the city's extremely low-income affordability program, we're able to provide a significant number of units that are at 30% of the area median income, which is affordable to East Harlem residents, Harlem residents generally.
Thank you so much.
We just asked that if HPD and the applicant team could submit this information in a follow-up, that would be helpful.
Thank you so much. This panel is excused.
Thank you.
There being no more remote public participants or participants in person who wish to testify at this time.
Can I get to address the members of the group?
Oh, yes. If anyone would like to send in written comments, that is landyuestestimony@council.nyc.gov.
Landyuestestimony?
Yes, at council.nyc.gov. I can give that to you after.
Thank you so much. There being no other members or members of the public wishing to testify on the Timbali Terrace proposal. Thank you. Under application numbers C240046HAM and C240047PQM, the hearing is, the public hearing is now closed.
And just adding for the record that the public hearing for the Landmark Preservation Committee designations are also closed.
So, that concludes our today's business. I would like to thank the members of the public and my colleagues, the Subcommittee on Land Use Staff, and the Sergeant-at-Arms for your participation today. This meeting is hereby adjourned.